May I have a motion that we only discuss those three matters for which we went into closed session? One item under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, a personnel matter concerning prospective candidates for employment, and two items under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 concerning consultation with legal counsel pertaining to real or probable litigation regarding a zoning violation and a code violation.
Mr. Mayor, just as a reminder, right before we went into the closed session, I made a motion to add to the closed session agenda an item concerning Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, one item regarding personnel matters concerning committee and board appointments. It would actually be four matters, and I'm happy to make that motion for those four matters that the mayor said and that I added.
Second. And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir? Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Hickman?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And are there any modifications to the public session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there's one modification. I make a motion to, I apologize, I'm just getting the right name, to add one item under, I'm not sure what section of the agenda, probably, it'd probably be a separate item. It's not a consent agenda. I think we'll have to vote on it.
A new business?
A new business, thank you. It's an employment contract for the Plasky Town manager.
Okay. And a roll call for that, please. Yes, sir. Mr. Penn? Yes. Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Mr. Hickman?
Aye.
Mr. Clons?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Thank you. And I'd like to welcome everyone that's here in attendance and those that are on the Facebook live. Now. Okay, so we'll go on to the presentations. So let's start with Calfie School update. Ms. Williams, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having us here. I would like to start the presentation by thanking-
Dr. Hickman, if you wouldn't mind, since we've got people on Facebook, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium right here and speaking into the microphone?
Okay.
It's just, uh, thank you. I know you're trying to keep social distance, and we appreciate that, but just for the sake of our citizens who are at home so that they can hear what you have to say.
Well, I'll begin the last part again. I'd like to thank the council and the mayor. I came last spring with a request to consider changing the name One Magnox Drive, which is the street that runs in front of Calfie, the old Calfie Training School, to Corbin Harmon Drive. And to my pleasure and a great many of my friends and Calfie alums, that's happened, and it brought great joy. I sent that photo out, and people were just pleased. I cannot tell you the number of positive responses that I received. And Jill, Ms. Williams, is going to tell you about one particular person who had a response.
I have a letter for you from Dr. Marilyn Harmon, who is the daughter of Chauncey Harmon, who was the principal at Calfie Training School when the school burned down. He says, or she says, "Dear Puyallaski Town Council members, on behalf of my brother Chauncey D. Harmon Jr., I would like to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for the consideration and approval of naming a street in memory of our father, Chauncey DePew Harmon Senior. The location of the street name is fitting, since it is where the historic Calfie Training School and Community Center is located. Both Dr. Corbin and our father sacrificed their jobs in order to make Puyallaski schools equal. This honor will provide inspiration for our family, friends, and the community for years to come. Again, for those involved in the recommendation and decision, we are humbled and appreciative of naming Puyallaski's newest street, Corbin Harmon Drive, sincerely Marilyn E. Harmon, Ph.D." I'm gonna pass this on. I guess I'll give it to the mayor. Pass that back.
And now to begin our slideshow. We promised to be thorough, but be brief also. We've been very busy this year, and we have a document to pass out at the end that just outlines some of the things that the Board of Directors has done in the last 15 months that we've been in existence. And I hope you will see from that list that we've been very busy. We still have a lot more work ahead of us. But just to recap, you know, I hope most of you know the history of Calfie Training School. It was a segregated school. My mother went there, and I went there for seven years. It was, uh, that wasn't a great time for African Americans, and that we were treated as second-class citizens. But that's not what the project is about. We'll certainly remember some of that context, and all. We're gonna have a museum. But I'm so excited for the positive asset that the Calfie Community and Cultural Center is gonna become for the town of Puyallaski, and where it was, once upon a time, a hub, a place of great excitement and pride for African-American citizens. We hope to make it something that's equally as positive and embraced by all citizens of the town of Puyallaski and Puyallaski County. We do want to have a museum. That was the hook that got me started. First, I feel like those teachers prepared me. They gave me an educational foundation. While the school was disadvantaged and didn't have some of the resources of the white counterpart schools, those teachers gave great effort and drill and rigor, and I'm a product. I'm not saying I might be their best product, but I'm a product of that school, and I'm able to go on and make a career out of being an educator myself. And I went on and earned a doctorate degree at Virginia Tech. And no matter where I went to school, I was able to do school. And that was because of the work, the foundation I had that was given to me by these teachers. And so we plan to honor them. We plan to remember Chauncey Harmon and Dr. Corbin, the educators, the students, and all that went to school about student life at Calfie. So that's just a couple of the things that we plan to do in our museum. We also plan to build educational threads, so future audiences, as they come, hopefully, will be attracted to school-aged children, and teachers will wanna bring their students to Calfie to learn not only about the students in the past, but other threads that mesh with the SOLs and that. So it brings it up to modern-day standards and all. So we have great dreams for our museum, but we're more than just a museum. We're gonna have a daycare center. We're gonna have a commercial kitchen. We'll talk more about those things later. Well, here's a list. I just spoke about the museum. The Lucy Chauncey Harmon Learning Center, that's the name we're giving to the daycare, or childcare, sorry, Jill, childcare portion of the Calfie Community and Cultural Center project. Jill will talk more in depth about the Learning Center, but the fact that we named it after two individuals, Lucy Harmon was the wife to Chauncey Harmon, and she was a teacher as well at Calfie. The Lena Hudstep Community Kitchen. Lena Hudstep was a great cook, a great friend to Calfie students. She made sure that everybody was fed, much like they do today. You know, sometimes the best place, the best meal that our kids get, our young people get, is at all our school campuses. And she certainly did that without any authorization from anyone else. When we had meetings about Calfie, I knew I liked her cornbread and beans, but it turned out I wasn't the only one. Everyone mentioned that cornbread and those beans. Things from Lena Hudstep. Dorothy Debury Venable is a teacher that's still living. She's my second-grade teacher, and she is just a hoop, and she was an inspiration. I was, we had a photo session some months ago, and we had a lot of Calfie alums, and everyone wanted to take a picture with Mrs. Venable, because they were under the, his assumption that they were her favorite student. I know I was, 'cause she told me I was, but my wife claims that same title. So anyway, we're glad to, we'll tell you more about the learning lab later. And then we hope to have a community event center in the big room that served as the cafeteria and auditorium. And then we have other spaces that we hope will be utilized for meetings and conferences, other smaller events and things. So that, in a very short capsule, tells you what we hope. It's more than just a museum. It's more than just a black, you know, building. It's for all, and it'll be a tremendous asset.
All right, so I know some of you have been involved with the background. I'm not gonna talk to you about it too much, but this process has been characterized by community engagement. We've engaged over 500 people so far in various ways, through a cleanup day, through a board nomination process, an open house. We, the board was seated after this democratic selection process, which involved 17 different organizations in the community. They received dozens of nominations and sifted through them. Mr. Penn was on that committee and representing you all, which was, it was great to have him there. They appointed the board in, as you probably remember, October of last year, and then the board got designated as an official 501(c)(3) organization. Here's some pictures of what the building looked like before. The building's 81 years old. We've got a raccoon living in there. Jamie, have you seen that raccoon, or have we just heard of it? Jamie's been in there. I know a lot. There's a big raccoon, we think. We still see signs and little paw prints everywhere, but in spite of them being little paw prints, we think it's pretty big. This is what the building looked like when we got started. It still has some parts that look quite bad, but at least you don't have papers and everything around. A big cleanup day. A Go Puyallaski County Cleanup Day last year cleaned out the building. It looks much nicer than that now. Some of the needs for this, we all know them, but I think it's useful to explain them. First off, most people don't know the history associated with the school. I think that's quite important for us as a whole community to understand for all sorts of reasons. Also, there's a desperate need, as I'm sure you're aware, for childcare here. We're considered a childcare desert, and only 8.5% of the children under the age of six have spaces in licensed quality childcare centers or licensed centers at all. One thing we know about that, I know from talking to social services and other providers, is there's a lot of money that could be coming into the county for childcare. Social services has to turn people away every single day who want to get jobs, who wanna get an education, but they don't have childcare opportunities for them. There's no placements for their children that the federal government or the state government would pay for if we had those spaces. So this is an economic need for our employers, for community members, for our tax base, for all sorts of reasons. We're leaving money on the table, but not having that. I'm not gonna read all this to you, but we've also talked with a lot of employers, some of our large employers, who say one of their greatest challenges with regard to job retention, employee retention, is childcare. If a lot of people, obviously, since we don't have many licensed childcare spaces, have their children with grandparents or with other family members, but if they get sick or go out of town or get a job, employees aren't showing up to work, 'cause they've got nowhere to leave their kids. Same thing, especially this need is heightened even more now, of course, with the schools being closed so often and children having to operate virtually. The cooperative extension locally has identified the local, building up the local food economy in Puyallaski County is their highest priority. We've got a lot of food-based entrepreneurs. We've got, well, two based, two right here, food-based businessmen here. But there's, they say it's an undeveloped network. I think Shannon's done some really great work of trying to, I love the work you've done on trying to connect local farmers to markets, not having to rely just on the farmer's market, but there's a lot more we can do with the community kitchen. Of course, we know about the lack of affordable access to the internet. We have procured Thompson and Litten as the architects, at least for this preliminary portion of the work, and the board and town staff have worked with him to develop this site plan. I'm not gonna make you look at all of it, but you can't see very well. There's fencing on both sides of the building, and that's around what's gonna be these natural outdoor play spaces. We're gonna add a parking lot there. Hope is to have a half-basketball court in the back that will be opened outside of childcare operating hours to the public. Same thing with the outdoor childcare spaces. Here's the planned floor plan for the building. We can give you these if you wanna see them in depth. But basically, you'll see this front part of the building that has the museum in it. That's the part that faces Corbin Harmon Drive. It used to be Magnox. That's the place where we're going to have the museum, a rental office, the administrative offices for Calfie, a kitchenette, and a multipurpose room that's a boardroom. It's gonna have very high technology capacity in it, so you can have virtual meetings and that kind of thing. The center part of the building is gonna be the childcare center, the Harmon Learning Center. And the doors from, there's gonna be directly, doors that directly open into these natural childcare spaces, outdoor spaces, which we've been told, we've been working very closely with the childcare providers to design the building, and that's apparently a very important. Kids get outside much more often if they have, teachers don't have to take them through multiple doors and make sure they're all there, so that's been a big deal. And towards the back of the building will be that multipurpose room, the community kitchen at the top, and upstairs from the multipurpose room will be a computer lab. We'll talk about that in just a little bit. Feel free to stop me if you have questions as we're going through. Cal, is there anything else you wanna say about the museum?
No, other than just, I'm sorry, other than just to, just the old history teacher meeting. Chauncey Harmon was principal at Calfie, the old Calfie before it burned down. It was across the street. And he wasn't happy with the pay. That was uneven pay. The black educators said, "At Calfie, we're only being paid a third of as much as what the white counterparts were being paid in the white schools." So he got with Third Good Marshall, who at that time was an attorney for the NDOA C.P., and he planned litigation against the school board. Somehow, the school mysteriously caught fire and burned down, and so that litigation never really happened. But Third Good Marshall came here several times, stayed up on Magazine Street in what was called, but known as the Moon Hotel. There was a movie out not too long ago. It was called The Green Book, and it was about a place that was life for African-Americans back then. They had to know where to stay. You couldn't go to Holiday Inns or Ramadi Ants and all and get a room. So there was sort of an unofficial guide that lit, black travelers that came to the South, know where they could stay, in the Moon Hotel up on Magazine Street, was one of those entities. So it's that kind of history that's little known about Puyallaski and about Calfie, and so we hope to tell those stories and other stories in the Calfie Museum.
We've already talked a little about the Learning Center. One thing to note, though, we'll be back. This is what we have, the Community Development Block Grant. Really, the town has the Community Development Block Grant Planning Grant to help create the business plans and the designs for the childcare center. We'll be back for a public hearing, the second public hearing on that topic, before we submit that grant application. But I just wanna tell you now that we've been working with the YNCAP Puyallaski County, New River Community Action Head Start, and Virginia Preschool Initiative to design a blended funding program or a blended program, blended funds, to support children of all income levels within the same classrooms there. So I think it's been a really great opportunity to bring these organizations together. Instead of sort of vying for the same population of children and kind of being competitors, they're coming together to figure out what are each of their respective strengths and how can they use those strengths together to meet the needs of the children there. The plan is to have spots for 100 children from all income levels. Some of those will be out-of-school, school-age care, but 64 will be zero, six weeks to five years old. We'll also offer drop-in and part-time childcare. There's no other place in the New River Valley that offers licensed drop-in and part-time childcare. So this is gonna be a model for the region. We've already talked about the natural outdoor play spaces. The thing that you all might be most interested in is that we're hoping to have those open to the public in the evenings and weekends when childcare hours aren't there. I think that'll be a draw for, we went to Brooklyn a few years ago, and they now have all these really cool playgrounds out that have these natural water features and slides built in. Like, this natural outdoor play space is a real trend, and we, of course, don't have anything like that, you know, outside of the creeks and rivers, just the way God made the nature. And I think that this will be a draw for young families interested in moving to the area. The Lena Hudstep Community Kitchen, Dr. Hickman already talked about this a lot. This is gonna be a commercial-grade facility that will be utilized by, one of our partners will be Puyallaski Daily Bread, that's interested in looking at an evening meal, serving, they do a daytime meal now, but they wanna serve at dinner. Working with local farmers, working hopefully with Shannon to figure out even more ways to get locally grown produce to the market. One of our partners is Beans and Rice. You all recently funded them for a mobile market with your CARES Act funding. And we're working with them to potentially provide, before the building's even up and running, to provide some cold and dry storage in the metal building that's out there at Calfie. I think Jamie may have helped us clean that metal building out, so thank you for that. And we're not sure that that's gonna go there, but if it does, since you all are the official owners of the building, we'll come back and make sure to talk with town staff and you all, if necessary, about making that happen. We've already talked about the computer lab. The plan is to have about 13 computer stations there. We've talked with the Fine Arts Center and also with private computer workforce credentialing organizations who might be interested in coming in and renting that space out to do workforce credentialing on computer programs. The Fine Arts Center's interested in doing digital art classes. Of course, we can use it for out-of-school tutoring and that kind of thing. I think there is also a large interest from older people. My son, whenever I say I'm old, he tells me that I'm middle-aged, so.
When I was in, when I was in the school system, you know, I had to keep up with my computer skills, because the world's changed it. But since I've been retired, it's even, I mean, it's just phenomenal how it's grown, and I have no formal, people trained me. So I have to, I have to ask Jill what Google Doc says, 'cause it was Microsoft Word, Microsoft Works. When I was in school, now it's Google Doc, and a three. So much stuff, business is done online, and older folks like myself now, and all, they have nowhere to get formal training. So I was, I was hoping that maybe in the morning time, we can offer courses, training for senior citizens and all. This would be a place where they could come, because we're still alive and still living. We have to be able to operate in this technical world.
Do you say anything more about the event center?
The only thing I would say is I DJ sometimes as a hobby, and I've DJed a dozen times over at the train station. And I know how that place is, you know, is busy, is popular. I've tried to get it, we've had one family dinner there. When we tried to go back, it was booked. So I know that these event-type centers, hopefully, we'll get back to where we can have large family gatherings and celebrations and things. So we feel like that event center can be used for gatherings like that. We've also partnered with Derek Theater, Kendall Payne. He's the son of Henry Payne, who was a alum of Calfie School, and he likes to put on theatrical productions and things like that. The event center could be used for things like that. So we think we're deserving of the term cultural center, you know, in our title.
Projected timeline has us opening sometime in spring 2023. We're applying for grants, and when I say "we," I use that term loosely, because the town is actually the applicant for most of these grants. I've been working with Darlene on developing those proposals and submitting them, and we'll be doing that for the next few months. If those grants come through, I'll tell you about budget in just a minute. Our plan is to start doing the official comprehensive construction design in the fall, procuring a contractor in the spring of 2022, conducting construction, and then hopefully being open for occupancy in spring of 2023. Given COVID and funding availability, how successful we are in these grants, this could get pushed back. Maybe it'll be earlier. I would be surprised, but this is the current timeline. You know, we've already talked about what the need is, and this is just the other end of what the impacts can be. I think one thing that you all would be interested to understand is just the amount of funds. Our plan is to raise, let me go ahead and, let me talk about funds in just a minute. So it looks like the cost for this building and for all startup costs, furniture, fixtures, equipment, first year of operation, as well as the staffing necessary to get through the campaign, is gonna be about $3.5 million. We plan to raise the vast majority of that from federal and state and private foundation grants. We have a plan and a target to raise $200,000 here locally. We've already raised a good, not all of that by any means, but we've already raised a portion of that. Really, what that means is that $200,000 could leverage $3.2 million just for the construction. On top of that, after that, once the center is up and operating, we'll be doing hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, at least in terms of bringing money in for childcare, which is creating jobs, which is allowing people, is creating jobs at the center. It's also allowing people to go to work and work at our local facilities. We're talking with the County Economic Development Authority about buying slots at Calfie to offer in their incentive packages to businesses to move to the county. So we're really trying to figure out ways to make this not just a childcare program or a community center, but really incorporate it into economic development as well. I guess another place we're gonna raise the funds is we're hoping to utilize state and federal historic tax credits.
And I want you to meet our Board of Directors. There's one young person missing, Haley Taylor, but this is our Board of Directors. And they're such, I serve as the chair, and I was a little apprehensive about taking that on, but this board has been so good. And they step up whenever we have a need. We have several committees that we've branched out to, and we do work in, and the board has volunteered to do that. But we also have a lot of private individuals, friends to Calfie, that serve on our board. I chair the Museum History Committee. We have a fundraising committee. We have a communications committee. We have an administrative oversight committee. So we have different committees, and we'll have need for more, but I've never had a problem with populating those committees and all. But this is a good working board, great, intelligent, good minds, and when we meet and strategize, it's really.
I'm just gonna skip through these. This is a presentation we put together. You're our guinea pigs for it. Thank you for being patient. This is our pitch deck for when we go and talk to those donors, potential donors, that we're gonna try to raise that 200,000 from. Under "get involved," I use this as a placeholder for you all. There's a few ways that the town council, we're gonna need you all. We're gonna be asking you all to help us going forward. One is, our agreement has really been, with the town, has really been kind of by gentleman's agreements up until this point. But now that we're applying for these big dollars, it would be good to formalize what that looks like in a memorandum of understanding. I've drafted, and Darlene's reviewed and given feedback on a draft MOU that I'll give you after this meeting, so you can review it and bring it up at a future meeting, whenever you deem that to be appropriate. It would be great if we could, we're hoping to apply for an Appalachian Regional Commission Grant on February 2nd. So it would be nice to be able to submit a signed MOU with that. The big piece of what the MOU says is that the plan is for the town or the Redevelopment and Housing Authority to hand the building over to the Calfie Community and Cultural Center Board after the construction is over. That way, we get to count the appropriate. That way, we get to count the appraised value of that building as a local match. So you all don't actually have to come up with dollars to support this, but it's going to look like you're giving us 300, that's considered a cash match. So whatever that building is, the value ends up being appraised at. I'll give that to you. We also, other upcoming grant submissions that we're actually submitting on, through the town, are for the National Trust for Historic Preservation. I just submitted a proposal for a half million dollars to the National Parks Service today, Appalachian Regional Commission, and the Community Development Block Grant. Another thing that we'll need, and I think the Pulaski Develop-, Redevelopment and Housing Authority will work on this, is a grant that the town has given from the Virginia Outdoors Foundation. It's going to have a, Mike can describe it better to you, but it's a public access easement that's going to go on that deed. Is that what it's called? Michael explained it to you whenever that needs to come up. And then we may be bringing to you, if we get the National Parks Service grant, they'll, they'll also want to put a conservation or a preservation easement on the deed, saying that we're not going to turn it into a McDonald's or tow the building down once they give us a half million dollars to preserve it historically.
Jill wanted, Jill wanted me to take this slide out, but I wanted it to stay in because it has her name on it, and she serves as our executive director. She, she makes, I mean, a lot of $9,000 a year. She does so much work. She's Godsend. This, this would be, you know, dead, just a ship, a dead ship in the water without her, because I know about what's going on after she tells me. She knows about what's going on before it happens. And, and so there you go. And so I try to be a good partner for her and help her and, be the liaison between her and the board. But she just has done such outstanding work. I, I just can't thank her enough and recognize her enough. Got another last slide? That's always good to hear. I, I wanted you to see this. I'm the old history teacher, and I like when things are circles. In this bottom, I don't, I don't, this bottom right-hand, well, doesn't.
Do it, you can do it over there, we'll be able to see it.
Okay. Well, this young man on his knees in the bottom right-hand corner with the white shirt on, the little bow tie, his name is Leon Russell. He, uh, he was in my wife's class. My wife is in that picture. Leon is also the person on the right. Leon is the national chair of the NAACP of All America. And so I just thought, our story kind of goes back to when Chauncey Harmon was meeting with Thurgood Marshall, a lawyer, counsel for the NAACP. And now a student who went to Calfey for seven years heads up NAACP. And so Calfey, that's just but one story about the legacy of Calfey Training School. And so, but I thought that was a powerful thing and all. And so I hope you can see that this building is going to be a tremendous asset for the community. We have those six utilities happening inside the center that makes us unique. I attended a conference last week. It was other black organizations who were museums and things like that, and they said they were struggling. They were having a hard time to get in foot traffic in their museums and things like that. They had heard about Calfey, I mean, news travels and things, and they were from all over central and, and western Virginia. And I, I just simply said, and one, we, they don't have Jill Williams, but, but we're not, we're not just a museum. We're, we're six, I mean, we're six things and all. We're that kitchen, we're that event center, we're the museum, we're the childcare center. We have meeting spaces, we have that learning lab. So we're going to be a lot of things, and, and we're not going to be just for a black public. We're for a total public and all. So I hope you can see, and the design, and Jill, she's had to hammer some things into me for me to see and all. But I see, I, I'm on board now. I see the value in, in Calfey Community and Cultural Center. So thank you. Yes. Yes, yes, Dorothy. Yes, sort of after that. And I, well, I told you, we, we plan to name places in the building after people such as, at the adults in the pictures and things like that and all to, to honor them.
I, I want to commend y'all for getting back to, to, I know you haven't let up, but I'm on the board. Whenever you get ready to have your board meetings, just give me a call, let me know. I know things have been chaos, but I knew behind the scenes, it was still going forward. I rode by there the other day, and it's just hard to believe that X number of years ago, we had set out meeting with a couple people where we're at right now. It will take place. It will get finished, and you will have your meetings there. Uh, this, I think, I said at the start, that it's, it's the diamond that nobody else has. That's, that's what, that's what we've got ready for. Just let me know, uh, uh,
I will, I will.
Just right back in there, we're going to be going again.
And, and, and thank you for, Jamie has helped us in the past, with some physical things, the sign that we have out in front, Jamie and Jill's help. Michael has helped us with some, the quiet deed and, and other things and all. So we have a lot of people that's, are stepping up. Thursday this week, I'm going to speak to Delta, Kappa, Gamma. A couple weeks ago, I spoke to Alpha, Delta, Kappa. So there's a lot of interest. I've gone over Virginia Tech five times to speak to classes at Virginia Tech about this project. I've been to New River a couple of times. So there's interest in this, and, and, and people are excited about it. We were just, we had a, we're, there's going to be an article about us in, in the Colors Magazine that comes out in February. They came up last week, the journalists, and interviewed us, and, and is excited about the project. Of course, last year, we were NPR story. I had a student who lived in Houston, Texas, said that they were shaving, and then on NPR radio, and he was, they were listening, and said, we have a story about a little-known place in Pulaski, Virginia, Calfey, and he couldn't believe it. That, so we, we have a great story. I mean, I'm, I think Denzel could star in it, you know, and, and all. And so, but seriously, I, I, I do think it has, it could be a movie. It, it, like Hidden Figures and all, I think this, with, with the backup and all. But I, I get excited in my dreams. Any other questions? Thank you.
I would like to say Dr. Hickman and Ms. Lee, it was an excellent presentation. Very enjoyable and very exciting, so.
And also, dreams are going to make this stuff happen.
Yes.
Keep dreaming. You know, it will, it'll come. It will happen.
Thank you for your support.
Yes, thank you so much.
Let me know, let me know.
I will, next time. January 16th. Well, we've been doing everything virtually, so I'll send you a link.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Merry Christmas.
All right, now we'll move on to the CARES Act funds. Ms. Rebecca Lieber and Mr. Jordan Litt, please.
Right. Before I get started, I've got a few handouts for everyone. Well, good evening, members of town council and mayor Collins. I just want to start briefly by thanking you all for allowing me to present this. It's a brief summary of our activities so far since early August and into September on our CARES Act spending here in the town. And as I said, this began in late August and early September, and once we started kind of identifying how we could make use of these funds that were received from Pulaski County, we started working across all of our departments to brainstorm on ideas for purchasing, whether that be for infrastructure items, sanitation items, things like PPE, personal protective equipment. A large portion of this is going towards grant funds, and then also payroll expenses that were able to be taken care of here at the town offices for our employees. Now, in total, we were approved for roughly $700,000 in CARES Act funds. And through that approval, we've taken it through all of these categories and kind of tried to divvy it up as best we could as to what we thought was the high priority items. And starting off here, I have the infrastructure category at a rough estimate of $175,000. And this category is the second largest category we have in terms of spending in this summary. And the breakdown here in this, in the infrastructure category, it basically touches on each item that we have purchased or are in the process of purchasing at this moment. Now, I won't go into too much detail on these, but I will just run through them briefly. We have the downtown Wi-Fi hotspot installation, touchless door entry systems for here in the municipal building, also on the police department side are in the works or have been installed. An environmental basement control renovation system is in the works as well. Kim Caddello of Republic Works has been spearheading that for us, looking at numbers, on getting that started. Ventilation ducts have been cleaned here at the municipal building and the senior center. Looking over to the other page, we have ionization units for HVAC systems, which really studies show are very effective in eliminating or preventing COVID-19 from kind of propagating in that area. We have the finance department customer drive-through window, which has actually already been installed. There are some adjustments, I think, or further work to be done on it, but it is in place. And we have the finance department countertop installation, and that's going to be coming up in early January, I believe. We have a quote in place for that as well. Automatic fire department bay doors have been installed at the fire department, which actually came in at a much lower price than you'd actually early, early, earlier anticipated. And they also got some commercial-grade air fans in place along with gear racks. The police department is working on getting a negative pressure ventilation system installed in their prisoner processing area. And we are also in the works on creating some town signage that will kind of help to promote our small business and nonprofit communities in our main street and downtown areas, since they've been especially impacted financially through this pandemic. Now, these other categories, moving on to sanitation, we have a rough, rough spending estimate of $28,000 for this category. I didn't really go into an in, in-depth breakdown for this category, because it's mainly just cleaning items, things like sanitation misters. But for this category and others, if council members or the mayor would like a, an in-depth spreadsheet of everything we have purchased or are in the process of, we do have that information. If you request it, I can get it to you. So moving on to personal protective equipment, it's much in the same vein as our sanitation items. This is stuff like face masks, extra sets of uniforms for first responders, particularly if you may dirty a set on a call that may pertain to COVID-19, and they may change on the spot. And then things like hazmat suits for the napparazzi for the fire department, and believe it or not, voice activated radios. So that kind of just removes one point of contact for them if they're on a delicate call with COVID-19 involved. And then next, we have the telework capabilities category. This is mostly pertaining to laptops for municipal building, municipal building employees here on the second floor and first floor. The police department ordered a few of these as well, and I believe we've got one for the fire chief and the fire marshal. So most of these have been, well, they've all been ordered. Most of them have already made it to the building. The last batch is on the way. That way, you know, in the worst-case scenario that we have an outbreak here at the building, our employees will have the capability to work from home and keep up the work they needed to do. And on to the biggest category we have are grant spending. So you can see that we spent $320,000 roughly on grant allocations to several different small businesses and nonprofits here in the town. And a few in particular received sizable sums in grant money, in particular Beans and Rice, which Jill Williams actually mentioned earlier in her presentation. They're working on a mobile food market, which they have purchased a food truck for. And that food truck will be used to service areas in the town that would be considered potential food deserts in a way, for nutritional food that may not be readily available for a lot of people. Pulaski Daily Bread, they received a $25,000 grant, and I actually spoke with their director on the phone yesterday. She let me know that that money has all been spent at this time, and they've actually been able to purchase roughly 20,000 pounds of food, along with all the utensils and serving needs that go along with that to get it to folks. The YMCA of Pulaski County also received a $20,000 grant to help with their YFSEL program, which kind of helps to facilitate after-school activities for kids, which has been really important in the last few months in particular, because it's kind of been a back and forth whether or not our kids are in school or if they're remote learning from home. So they had a big jump in staffing need for these after-school activities at the Y, and these funds really helped them keep stacking where it needed to be during that time period. And then finally, our small business and nonprofit grants. Back when we all, back when we started all this and got the funds approved, and this was one of the first things we wanted to do, was establish small business and nonprofit grant programs for our community. So each small business or nonprofit could apply for up to $5,000 in funds. And in total, we approved 47 different small businesses and nonprofits here in the town of Pulaski. And I want to say, maybe all but two or three of those received a maximum $5,000 amount of funding. And then finally, we have payroll expenses and public health and safety salaries. So the way this works was, we were able to, I guess, recoup some of our lost funds on things such as, you know, employees working on a task or a situation that was related to COVID-19, whether there would be extra sanitation in a work area, qualifying emergency personnel working extra or on call for something related to COVID-19. And then if a staff member was required to quarantine because of exposure, then this would apply to that as well. And much in the same vein for public health and safety salaries, we were actually able to ask for reimbursement on these funds. And once the money was reimbursed, the money we received from the county could then use, be used for items that would normally be considered outside of the scope of approved CARES Act items. So with that money, and that is roughly $90,000 that we did receive through that program, we have used that for a research study of Pet Creek bacteria levels to pay for the service contract portion of our Wi-Fi installation project, and to provide a bonus to our public safety employees for all the hard work they did throughout the pandemic. And that's essentially everything I have for you. I'm sure you have a few questions. I'd be glad to answer them while with Rebecca, whatever we can.
I actually would like to see that spreadsheet with everything on there. And I think, I actually also think that to give you all credit for all the hard work you're doing, and I think with council's permission, I think we should be publicly posting this and showing people what you all have been doing for so, all the hard work you've been doing, and all the, you know, all the places that we funded. Because I do think that there is a, a need to be transparent about how we're spending this money, because it is, you know, it is everybody's money, and I think that would be a good thing for our citizens to know. I think there is a, a want out there to know what's going on, and I think that would be great. Because I know you guys have worked so hard on this, and just things like, you know, 20,000 pounds of food for Daily Bread. I think that's a, that's a great story that, that you all should, you all at Daily Bread should all get credit for doing that work.
Oh, absolutely. And, and yeah, we would be glad to provide you with those. And I'll work with Rebecca and then Ms. Bertram as well on trying to get something ready for just a big public.
Yeah, I think.
And I, and I agree with Mr. Reese. It is good information. The only thing I would ask is when we do paste it, is if on the items that are pending and it's a work in progress, and you, you guys are doing a lot of. and it's a work in progress and you guys are doing a lot of good work? I was just wondering if we could maybe post an estimated date, anticipate a date? I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, I know that's going to vary sometimes, especially in these times with COVID.
Yeah, it's especially the case for a lot of the big items.
Yeah.
So for things.
But even if it's a timeframe of, you know.
First quarter, 21, second quarter. You know, whatever it is, that's fine. Just, you know, I think people, these are the kinds of things that, you know, I think our citizens should know and would probably want to know.
Right.
It's a lot of good information. You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you.
I think there's a huge problem misunderstanding of how much work has had to go into this to find out what to do and how to appropriately make use of these funds. And I think this makes it a little more clear of how much, how much you guys have had to do.
And it's, it's not just us. It's people across all of our departments and been working really hard on identifying items to, you know, purchase this, purchase through this money.
Yeah, because when this began, you know, Darlene got with all the department heads and asked us, you know, what could we, as department heads, what could you use in your departments for various things? And so they did, they had to do a lot of research on their own. And then we had to compile everything. And then because the county is actually the holder of the monies, everything had to be sent to the county for their approval. And then so once we got the approval, then everybody could start ordering everything. And working with the county, depending on what it is that's being purchased, they're paying some of the bills. While if it's structural type things or things that will affect our assets, we have to pay for them and then ask the county for reimbursement. So it's been a lot of work for a lot of people, but, you know, it's benefiting everybody, including the citizens, which is, you know, our main goal.
If you could pass that word back to the remainder of staff, help us get the, we appreciate the work, everybody.
Absolutely. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to General Chemical Company site remediation update by Mr. Rick Tom.
How you doing, Mayor?
Very well.
How are you?
Good afternoon.
Good, thank you. My name is Rick Tony. I'm the project engineer for the town. I've been on this project for about six months. I know that it's been, been a while. Actually, the date for the project to be over is January 31st. But we made a phone call, asked for an extension and received one, but I'll get to that. Let's see, on October the 9th, the RFP was posted. It was posted in newspapers. It was posted at Draper Aiden's site. We had it here on the town's website. We contacted contractors. Draper Aiden contacted people also. The pre-proposal meeting at the site was 10:26. Cherie, the environmental engineer and I, were there for close to an hour, but no one showed up. Okay? So when Draper, actually when Draper Aiden asked if they could put this out as an RFP, Bill and I, Bill Pedego, tried to convince him that we felt that an RFP for just a local contractor to come in with equipment and dump trucks to remove this was a little much. Just the paperwork alone for an RFP is tremendous. The RFP itself is 42 pages. So I think that's what scared people off. But we wrote up an amendment to have a virtual meeting on 11/4 at 2:00 PM. Again, no one showed any interest at all in doing this work. A lot of contractors told us that they were just busy, that this site was, you know, maybe a little bit of a small job for them, but we couldn't get any interest. So after the 4th, the RFPs were due on the 16th, November the 16th. And when no one showed, we did have one individual company, CCI, and that was Containment Control Incorporated. They called and said they were interested, but they didn't have enough time to get the RFP answered and back to us. So we created a second amendment and to extend the date to 11/20. Okay, at 11/20, the gentleman walked in and he handed me the RFP. Well, when I opened it up, he wanted $405,000. That was twice the amount of money that we have. So with that said, I discussed with the two engineers at Draper Aiden, I felt like that we could do better if we just contacted contractors, just the local contractors, you know, and explained to them what we wanted, that the paperwork was out, all I wanted was a bid. So they agreed with me, they started contacting people. And I did also, I had four contractors show up. Actually, I had three. One hasn't been to the site yet. We explained to them what we wanted. And, give me this. The first drawing there is just an overview of the site itself. It's showing you, it's showing you what needs to be removed, the brick rubble, the concrete. We have brick in a couple of places. Then to the left of the drawing, there will be some earth that needs to be moved. Everything from the elevation now, if it's this ground, will be removed down one foot. Concrete and brick come out, we will also remove one foot of earth. There is some contamination at the site, but to be honest with you, it's very little. We are able to take this debris, the contractor, whoever it may be, to the New River Valley landfill. So that will help us, you know, just to haul at short distance. The other one I knew of was in Petersville, which that would have been a greater expense. In the upper-left corner of the drawing, it's heavy metals, that's what's in there. It's a little bit worse than the rest of the site, but still, everything is good to go to the landfill. Now, I've talked to one of the contractors to save us some money. The concrete we're going to bust up, and we'll get the contractor to pile it, and we will take samples from it, send it off, and if it comes back that there's no contamination, then the one contractor said he would take it and grind it, or we can take it and put it at our site. What's it down? Is it 99? I'm still learning my roads. But the town could use it for field, backfill or anything like that. And that would save us a chunk of money. When I say money, we have 207, I think it's $217,000. If I can get this done, just a demo and get the pads prepped for under $200,000, I think we'll be in shape. I may be, I may be off the mark, but, you know, I think the 405,000 was just a little much. I think the contractor came in, he was the only one. This is just my opinion. And he said, you know, they want us to do it, they're going to pay. But, you know, we canceled it. I gave the contractor an opportunity to bid on the work as we're looking at it now. And this is a price per ton. I told him that the town would pay the tipping fees. This way, I get all the paperwork back. There's no doubt where the debris went. It just makes sense a little bit. Okay, the next page is the finished product. It's been waiting to get set for. And that product there as of now is priced at $1 million. I think it's a good use of the property, skate park, basketball, you know, it's right there in the open, like that. I have found that when things are sort out of the way, you know, things happen, spray painting and different stuff like this, but I think this year, like I said, if it is a finished product eventually, it will be in a good spot. Okay, the contractors that I've talked to, they have due 12/23 to give me the bid. So after Christmas, I will know something. Hopefully, we'll have a contractor and we can start to work. I talked to DEQ and this, DDD, can you read my name? Over the phone, I explained to them what had gone on with the RFP and that we didn't want to lose the money that we had. They agreed. I asked them if it was already, if I did this, went to contractor personally, just asked, explained to them what we wanted, so we could get it. That was fine. They wanted us to spend the money. I asked for an extension until June, they gave me to the end of September. So once we get a contractor, we can have that taken care of, at least a demo and a pad. But it shouldn't be a problem. I'll try to answer any questions now. I can only answer the questions that, you know, like I said, I've been on it for about six months, so if you go back in your folder.
What will be the actual days worked on the project? Would you estimate?
The only, you're talking about already?
No, no, when, to get this, downloading, grading, all that stuff done, how many?
Downloading and the pad, probably looking at, depending on weather, I would think somewhere between three and four months.
Okay. Continue with work or?
Well, you know, it depends. Like one contractor said that he could use it, he's right here, HCR Henderson, he said that he could use it for filling since we head to the end of September. So if it was every day, good weather, maybe two months. It's just sort of slow-going. I mean, it's easy, the site is simple to get to, easy, it should be easy to get everything up. But just the haul from here to the landfill and back, which has four or five trucks, two or three, they'll catch up with each other. Sit and wait, hurry and wait.
When do you expect to get quotes back from the contractors?
I've asked for them to 23rd of December. Told them I'd have them before we left for Christmas. They didn't seem to have a problem with that.
Quick question, you may have said something a while ago. Now, the courts and the recreational area that we're looking at right here, I don't recall that ever being flooded. Do you know if that's, isn't that?
Not that I'm aware of. I've been here for a couple of years, the creek has been up several times, but I've never seen it up there. And there was something else that I stressed to them that, you know, the ENS portion of this project on the creek side have to be taken care of. We do not want to set an industry. Shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue.
I would just interject that while Rick has shown you how the site can be used once the area is identified as clean and meets requirements, then we would have to look at funding of that site. And there is no money planned at this point. And so one of the reasons that I wanted Rick to give you all an update this evening was number one, to demonstrate to you some of what we have to go through to get a project to where it can actually be done and the kind of things we encounter as staff. And so it looks like sometimes, you know, you get the money, you should be able to do it tomorrow. Well, there are lots of forces at play. But the second thing I think, or reason that I wanted him to mention this, is that people understood that while that was given to you all sometime back, this concept for the land, I think some people took that and ran with it as though this was going to happen and was going to happen right away. And it certainly is something that when we come back to you all, probably mid to late January or early February, and start talking about a capital improvement budget, this and a lot of other things will be on that list, and you all have to prioritize how you want to spend what money we have. But this site is not going to be available to do anything until we do the remediation that's required. So there are sometimes other steps that have to be taken before. And it's unfortunate that people see a design like that and they say, okay, that's our next whatever, basketball court, skate park, or have you, because there are lots of things that you all will have to discuss before that happens. But we will have a clean site that we can use for any number of activities, and that'll be up to the council to decide how best you want to use that property.
Anyone else?
Go to the next one.
And next is 67 and 69 West Main facade update. Mr. Rick Tom, welcome.
The brick masons are over on 67 and 69. They power washed the building, cleaned everything up. They went in and it took, took me about a week with the brick masons to match the mortar. They would, they had RFPs and they would mix it and they would yell for me, we would look. After about a week, we finally got one that matched. So as they were working up, they came to me and told me that the parapet wall was just scum. He said, you can take your finger and push through brick, or you can push through the mortar on top. This came from just wind, rain, snow, freeze thaw, but it is in bad shape. There's, it needs to come off. A young lady by the name of Ariel Clark from Southwest Registration, not Registration, Restoration, out of Richmond, came in to inspect the wall. She went up, she took out those pictures, she came down, she discussed it with me and Jeff, the superintendent. She agreed with us, the wall was just, can't be saved. The question is, how far do we have to go down before we hit a solid surface so we can start building? Hopefully, it won't go past the trusses that go through. I'll hand these up soon. These are just pictures of the parapet wall on top of 67 and 69.
The council understands these are redevelopment and housing authority-owned properties that we have been maintaining. So any repairs to them are going to have to be a part of the line with the town because the housing authority really is a placeholder more so than a disponent source for activities like this. And then I hope Valleys Week can eventually sell these buildings.
This here is just a sketch, it's some clothing. It goes along different parts of the parapet wall. The same with the parapet wall, is this the, the wall is above the roof, above the actual roof? Two and a half, two and a half feet. As you will see on the.
So it's what you mean, the top of the facade?
Yes.
But the parapet is the part that sticks up above the roof, but it's behind the facade.
Roof down here and that's. Let's see, no, it's a good one. All right, sorry. Okay, I was talking about the trusses, the rafters. You'll see that on the sketch? They go into the parapet wall. Okay, they are flush with the outside. Now, we know that the ends of the trusses are in bad shape, just from the weather. On the inside of the building. On the inside of the building, it's actually, the trusses are in good shape. We've had one spot, if it was sixteen-nine, if I was inside looking out, it would have been to the left side in one corner, that had a little bit of water there. So we're lucky there. If we have to, once we, I have to, once we start with the project to repair the wall, look down at number one there, that is temporary support. We've got to put under, the rafters are there, so when we take the brick down, that if we have to go below the rafters, then we have the support to maintain the weight. We try to retain any brick that we can, because we can reuse them. There's not a whole lot that at the moment that we can reuse. We came up with an idea that one thing to do is on the backside of that parapet wall is remove the brick, move those to the front that we need and then use regular brick in the back that can't be seen. So that would save us, save us some money. That and I don't know if we can find, you know, bricks to match, to be honest.
So Rick, one of the things that I'm aware of is that like repointing the things you have to do with masonry? Because the mortar's wearing out, is that basically what happened? The mortar wore out and it just started to deteriorate because it hadn't been maintained properly?
That and from just the weather, the cracks on top allowing the water.
Age?
Yes, age. Ariel said that from what she saw, that within two to three years of weather, you know, events that were out, that it's possible that the front of the building, you know, portion of it would come down, just where it's, you know, it's in bad shape.
But that makes me think, have we ever done any, looking at any of the other, because I've noticed similar issues with other buildings in downtown? Have we done a sort of survey of any of that, just to?
I haven't, no.
Okay.
But I can tell you now, if you're facing the street sixty-seven and sixty-nine, the one to the right or the left of that has the same issue. And the one to the right of those two buildings are actually in worse shape than we have. I mean, they're, you know, no maintenance and it just happens.
Yeah.
Now, there was a new roof put on this a few years back, I'm not sure when, but everything that we could tell, the material that was used for the roofing, they, when it came to the front to finish or start, they didn't do it correctly. So that would be, if you look at your little sketch, number five, that is the roof membrane, that's how it's supposed to come out, go up the back wall, and then there would be a metal strip put across the membrane and just turn it into the wall to hold, and then it would be caught to keep the water out. I was talking to the superintendent today. Of course, not having the funds to do this at the moment, we have to come up with a way to seal those cracks and things up. I brought up break metal. But he said, you know, it was, and break metal, I'm sorry, break metal is like when you're getting your house vinyl and they put metal around your windows and different things, doors, well, that's what they call break metal. I suggested that we use that, but we're afraid that we couldn't come over far enough to adhere to the wall. So we discussed it some more and made a suggestion that tarp that we put up there, when they first found this, is to bring it over and then take concrete screws and screw it into the brick, but we'd have to bring it down far enough to get something solid. That would stop, you know, the water, the snow from getting into the building and not doing any more damage. So with all that bad news, I'll give you some good news. Eighty-four is finished. Mark Hale is showing the building tomorrow. He's the owner of the building, he has someone that's interested. I don't know if you've been down Main Street, but the storefront looks absolutely wonderful. It made a world of a difference. Mr. Hale's building seventy-four, if everything goes well, it will be finished by the end of Wednesday of next week. Sixty-seven, sixty-nine, had the windows reworked, they're painted. It looks, looks good. And the awning situation on sixty-nine, there was an awning, we removed it. There was angle iron coming out from the brick to support the awning. We also cut those off. The angle iron sticks out maybe an inch or so from the brick, it needs to be covered up. But we got a price on that, it was like twenty, two hundred dollars, something like that. And if the funds are not there to take care of that, I think Public Works, I think we could probably do that. You know, it consists of two beforeers being framed and then finding a, someone that would break the metal for us to fold it, like we need it down over the front to protect it. So, you know, I think that's something that we should be able to do. Do you want to pick us, so have, unless you get some questions?
So, do we have a general understanding of what the value of these buildings is to the town or redevelopment housing authority? And then maybe some measure or scope of how much it's gonna cost to fix what's wrong with it?
The parapet wall, the only way that the contractor, the one that we have talked to, who gives a price is, you know, sort of by the hour, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Not knowing how far we have to come down to remove, to get to a solid foundation.
So, so the scope of the work is reasonable, think it could be done with thirty thousand dollars?
I'd like to think we could find somebody to do it cheaper. I'm always thinking about.
And the value of the buildings?
Really depends on how much more has to be done for the rest of the building to make it marketable. You know, and that's the purpose for which the town, I guess, acquired through the housing authority. These two buildings to begin with was the idea, you know, making them marketable and then enticing, you know, developers to come to the area. I think this particular one was a little bit of a surprise from the standpoint of what we thought
Yes.
was there, you know, we have facade grant money that actually is being used on both of those in addition to the ones that Rick mentioned. All in anticipation of trying to get, you know, additional tenants and occupants in the town. And we have had a couple of buildings actually purchased downtown recently. Some of them needing some extensive work so that people are, I guess, willing to make that investment. And at one time, the town had actually a loan on one of those two buildings, I can't remember, with Mr. Creachfield? And then he turned that one back to the town and it was about the same value as we're talking about of the cost of the repairs. But I think the real issue for tonight, because again, it's, we're getting closer and closer to having this big discussion that I told you I would have had about capital improvements. Just to give you a couple of examples of things that we are encountering, Rick and others have come up with a temporary solution to keep the building from deteriorating any further. But at present time, you know, we just don't have available thirty thousand dollars or something less than that to improve this building.
We can't, we don't, that wouldn't qualify for any of the facade funds?
Any?
The facade funds?
No, in fact, we are struggling to get enough facades done that the original grant required, which was fifteen.
So these wouldn't qualify for that?
That wouldn't be considered facades.
Oh.
We already are spending money on the facades for these two buildings.
Oh, I see.
But these kind of repairs go beyond that. Now, if we were a, well, we actually did do prior, several years ago, some roof repairs. That may be when that roof was done, Rick.
Yes, it does the roof. It's in good shape, but just needs a little.
They didn't qualify for loans, so you actually ended up spending U D A money to do those repairs. And I think the, it was anticipated, you know, that with the facade money and having done the roofs, that you'd have a building that was reasonably marketable, not pristine, but something that someone would be wanting to take over. But now that this issue has been identified with the parapet, it's gonna cost us more to make that a marketable building. And I want to credit the staff for, when they come to me and say it's gonna cost this, I'll say, go back to the drawing board and tell me how we can take care of it on a temporary basis or how we can do something, just like Rick was mentioning, I don't know what he called them, but these little things that are sticking out from that one building that he said was about an inch out.
The angle iron?
Yeah.
That held up the?
I said, we don't need to spend twenty, two hundred dollars doing that, find a way to deal with that. And he's offered you tonight some thoughts, you know, about how Public Works is gonna be looking at that. And I, I do want to impress upon you all as well as the viewing public that our Public Works people are very creative when it comes to trying to find ways to deal with some of these unexpected, unanticipated expenses, but still keep the community safe and the building safe and secure.
I see, another thing, we did go up and remove all the loose brick that was up there. Actually, we removed the brick from the building. The one I said that was in bad shape, actually that building has been sold. The gentleman has had an architect in, engineers in, they're getting ready to start on it. It is moving there. And we removed some of the brick to the right. I mean, they were just, they were just hanging there. It was just, you know, a bird could have flown down a little, went on and it would have brought the brick off. We were lucky, no one really, truly got hurt. But to see sixty-nine is in somewhat better shape than sixty-seven on the inside. Sixty-seven needs some floorwork done, and I think that was just from a water issue. But sixty, sixty-nine is rough cut timbers in the rafters and the studs. It's solid. And like I said, there, we can't really find any water damage, so it's a good thing.
I do think we'll have to give the serious considerations you're suggesting when we do our capital improvement plan because in current state, I think we're, I think it's safe to say we're probably sitting on these buildings to some degree, it's gonna be harder, more difficult to move them, which is our ultimate goal.
Yeah, it does seem like we need to sort of make money so we're not losing money.
Right.
I mean, save money so we're not losing more money, but that's what I wanted to say.
So I, so I think, yeah, I do think we need to think seriously about locating some monies to do that and get that fixed, and even the floor issue in the adjacent building.
And I have also started trying to come up with some masons that can do the work so we can get a different price. I prefer three different bids, you know, gives me something to look at. Like I said a minute ago, when you have one, you sort of have a corner on the market. But I'm in the process of doing that. Hopefully about, you know, into January, I should be able to come up with somebody.
We're also beginning to put together marketing materials and information on the town's Facebook page as well as our website about buildings that are available, properties that are available. That will, that list will include those owned by the redevelopment, technically owned by the redevelopment housing authority as well as the town. But we want to make sure that when we list them, they are properties that somebody would really want to have, you know. If they've got major problems, then we've gotta deal with that first rather than putting it on the market. I made the mistake of not having seen a building in advance a couple of months ago and somebody wanted to take a look at a building we own, I think it's seventy-two East Main. And the adjacent person was interested in it, but when I went into the building, half of it looked very easy to repair, but then the back half, it just needs to be torn off, it really is in bad shape. And so that's on our list of things to do when the Public Works people have time. But I wouldn't show that building again if it were me until that back part is removed so that you are presenting something that people can look at and say, well, maybe I have to do something with this. And I think that's the case with this particular building.
Certainly, I think drying structures really sound are critical. I mean, if you take somebody into a mold infested or, or a moldy building, it's an immediate turn off and
Yes, absolutely.
It's not gonna go anywhere. So I, I think we need to, like Mr. Reed said, spend money to, to make money. It'll come back around, but we're confident about that.
If anything, we just want to pay more repairs, it's not ours anymore.
Exactly.
Speaking of buildings on East Main Street, has anybody ever looked at the old jail and seen what the status of that building is? I happen to see it just about every day, so.
I, I don't even know which one is the old jail.
Oh, okay. It's across the street from where you're, you're doing the grading work?
Oh, okay.
You, you.
Got to be the wire around.
The one that looks like a jail, you know. Because I think, and I know that's, I'm sure the county owns that, and I know that, I see cars there sometimes, but I think that's something we should probably be looking at, just, and other buildings on the, on Main Street just to see if there is work that needs to be done, the sooner we get it done, the better. If we're gonna have masons in and it looks like another home, another building owner needs to do some work, I'd rather not have a pile of bricks in the street, because I know that happens with some of these old brick buildings. If you don't do the repointing, the whole facade can come down on you.
Yes.
And I think we should be looking at that. And I know you've got lots on your plate, but I think that might be a safety issue that we need to be.
Okay.
And we don't want to be the town where somebody's car got crushed by a pile of bricks. That's gonna make it awful hard to market our town.
One building to bring up, come, I school do it with a round table, the old Draper Mercury Building, it's size of chicken.
Pete Creek one?
Pete Creek, I don't know.
That's the one I think Miss Burden was talking about.
It's been condemned, and in fact, I had some pictures, I feel able to bring them in with me down in my office, I can go get them, what the inside of that building looks like, but it is terrible, in terrible shape. And we've now passed the time that the owner had to respond to us on it being demolished, so our next step, and I was working on that, is to get, get reviewed for asbestos so that we can start with proceeding with demolition. We'll have to bear the expense of that, put a lien on the property and then hope that we recover some or all of that if the property sells. But it's a, it's a good location for a building, but it's wide open.
It's why I was thinking about the jail, because I was thinking if we're gonna knock that building down, it might be nice if we sort of, that whole section.
Well, we need to look at it, if it's a county owned building, we need the county to do something about maintaining it. But I, I don't know that anybody's ever said anything to me about the jail, but we're not.
I can tell you why the jail had been brought down, it's the cost of the money, cost. It's nothing but concrete, steel.
What I imagine might have some asbestos in it too.
Yeah, it's just gonna be very, back, I'm just speaking, it was, it was well over a million some dollars back when he talked about to start with. It was this land asbestos, concrete, about that, and steel, there's no wood in that building. So I can imagine what the cost going across scale on that thing will be, so be it. It's gotta be done.
We'll be bringing you the list of, for all of our, these are the two good examples that I thought would be helpful to you all to know really the kind of things that day in and day out we're encountering.
Dan Elsie?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Rick Tom.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to consent agenda if you look over the December first, twenty twenty, council meeting minutes.
I'm moved with group December first.
I move with Ruth, December first, twenty twenty council meetings, as written.
Right.
May I get a roll call, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Pan, Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
We'll move on to financing. So look at the, to be approved, uh, subordination agreements for eighty-nine and ninety-four West Main Street.
Now, this had been discussed with you all previously, uh, because of the loans that, um, Mr. Cretschel has, and he's going for permanent financing through the Virginia Housing Development Authority, and in fact, that closing is scheduled for next week. And so you all just need to affirm publicly that you're aware of the subordination to that, um, V A Q.
Do we have to approve the support? We have to approve this coordination agreement, is that correct?
Right.
And those loans, they're up to date?
Yes, in fact.
All, all, ours and the ones that we.
And the one with the county, and that Mr. Cretschel was bringing, being personally with checking tomorrow.
Okay. So we've been up to date and on time?
Yes.
Great. What we've always wanted. So I move to approve the subordinate, subordinate nation agreements for eighty-nine and ninety-four West Main Street, as written. Second.
May I get a roll call, please, sir?
Sir, Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Then if you look at Resolution twenty twenty dash forty, the budget amendment for reimbursement from the county for the CARES Act.
These are funds that were mentioned to you earlier in the presentation by Jordan, and that we've been using for various activities to include the maintenance agreement with the Wi-Fi system that we're gonna be putting in this study of bacteria in the Peak Creek that has been recommended, as well as using it to fund a portion of the bonus that was given for public safety employees. As you all know, we funded the balance from the other employees through savings that we had in the gym.
My move.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash forty.
Second.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Pond?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Let's move on to safety. Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-one. Resolution opposing Kansas to Qualify Immunity for Law Enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we set up Resolution twenty twenty dash forty-one.
I'm gonna have to just get on my soapbox for a minute. I apologize, 'cause I know that, but I have a real, I have a real problem with qualified immunity as a concept for a couple of reasons. One, qualified immunity only applies when there's been an actual deprivation of constitutional rights. Two, it's a judicial doctrine, which means it's not founded statute. No one, no person, no elected official, no voter has ever approved it. It was created eighty years after the adoption of the law on which it applies. That's Section nineteen eighty-three of the U.S. Code, which provides for a redress for our citizens if their constitutional rights are violated. And to be clear, those are all their constitutional rights, not just the Fourth Amendment of freedom from search and seizure, not just their First Amendment rights, but also things like their Second Amendment rights. And I think we have a lot of constituents in this town who care a lot about their constitutional rights. And so it was created in nineteen sixty-seven or so, and it basically says that if you violate, if you, as say, a law enforcement officer, violate somebody's constitutional rights, you are only held liable if it violates clearly established law. What does clearly established law mean? Well, courts say that it has to be something that another court has found to be a deprivation of human rights. You may have heard of the case out of Pulaski County where a member of the Sheriff's Department was sued for, you know, swearing out a warrant and getting an indictment against somebody, and it was the wrong person's name. The only reason that that individual, the wrong person, lived in a different state for eleven years, was able to get past this qualified immunity, the judge had to find that the, that the, that not only did this individual was wrongly imprisoned and, and had the legal right not to be imprisoned, but that also that the officer didn't have probable cause to investigators, because this exact same scenario happened in a different part of Virginia. Actually, it was North Carolina, my apologies, in which an individual was suspected of purchasing, being, selling drugs to an undercover agent, but just had the same name as somebody else. And the, and the law enforcement officer didn't do the proper search. Qualified immunity is not an effective mechanism in protecting law enforcement officers from, from liability, because in the first case, almost all localities, we bear the burden of paying for those things. We, as the town and the citizens, do. And it's not actually a problem in Pulaski County, because we have a law, a law enforcement liability policy through Virginia, through V A Corp. So we don't actually pay, just like if you get into a car accident, we don't actually pay for that cost. I mean, and, and it, qualified immunity has, because it has to have, it has to almost meet the exact same facts, it has the perverse reaction where, in a case out of Florida, at one-thirty in the morning, man and woman were in their home, and heard knocking at their door. That man was concerned. He picked up his legally-owned handgun, walked to the door, opened it, and was shot by a law enforcement officer. The court said that that law enforcement officer, who never announced him, him or herself, got qualified immunity for that. And I think that that is something that would happen in this town. I think there's a lot of folks here, in, in the town of Pulaski, who might, if the door was knocked at one-thirty in the morning, have to go and, you know, would feel the need or the, or the desire to come to their door armed. And I think that's a, that is something that's a problem. And this is not to say, to, to say that there aren't many fine law enforcement officers who do a good job and are conscientious, and that there is a mechanism for assuring that these individuals aren't held personally liable. It's called a jury trial, and I think that they, like the rest of us, should have to go through that process like we all do. I understand that there is a, a concern about, uh, law enforcement officers being exposed to individual liability for actions they take on the job, but there is a better way to do that than through qualified immunity. And it's not me just saying this. It's people like the Kato Institute, who just recently came out with all the problems with qualified immunity. It's a twenty-eight-page, uh, policy statement. The Kato Institute's famous libertarian organization. It's the one way, actually, me and most libertarians agree, it's that there needs to be personal accountability for people when they make mistakes. When our constitutional rights are violated, there should be a mechanism for redress. And that mechanism, according to the Congress of the United States, is through a court case, and that should be the way they do it. And so I'm not telling anybody how to vote, but that's how I would, I, I just feel like I need to say that, because I'm gonna vote no, and I want people to know why.
And this is why, sir. I have been doing this stuff for thirty years. You have a split second to make a decision, say your life or somebody else's life, and I'm not gonna wait on no jury to make that decision. I've been, I've been shot, I've been drove through the mud by this truck. This is not gonna become Seattle, and I have. I'm here to protect our law enforcement. They have a serious job. They have a job that is not being filled right now. I don't know what the heck these people are gonna do. They pick up that nine-one-one. Maybe we'll send a bunch of lawyers up there to take your problem out of Kato. But I've got enough money. But I am not gonna put what I've worked for all my life to some piece of crap in a corner who thinks he's done it all. I got a second to make my decision. One second. Everybody else has twenty-four hours. Sit back and quarterback me. I was out there at two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock, and one o'clock. Y'all was home asleep. I can sit back and quarterback your job, your job, your job, your job, if I got enough time. We're talking about a split-second decision. That's what we're talking about. I made the motion.
I would like to make one comment, Ruth, with regard to qualified immunity. I understand that there's an exception to, I think there's an exception to any, anything that I, I mean, there's always gonna be that, that worst-case scenario. And, but I think as a general rule, when you cite some of those worst-case scenarios, that happens. It's, it's extremely unfortunate. But I think having a knee-jerk reaction and going back all the way the other way, to the other side of the spectrum, um, to where you expose, and what, the way I read this, you expose your law enforcement to frivolous and harassing lawsuits. I think it's a mistake.
I, I, here's, here's the thing, though. Qualified immunity doesn't prevent anybody from being sued.
Well.
'Cause I mean, all these cases that, like the case out of, out of Pulaski County, that was, that was in context of a lawsuit. And the judge, just to be clear, the judge who, who made that decision is a recent court, uh, judge appointed, and prior to that was the chief prosecutor for the Western District of Virginia. So not necessarily, you know, someone who's necessarily, you know, second-guesses law enforcement, but somebody who found that, and, and the thing is, is that we all, we're all judged on what we make split-second decisions. We're driving, the, the gentleman who hit the, the two state troopers on, while driving his car, maybe made a split-second decision to look at his phone and then hit some.
But, but at the same time, you're not, as a law enforcement officer, I think you make split, it's your job to make split seconds.
Right, and, and.
In very dangerous circumstances. And I think, I'll say one other thing. I'm obviously not as well versed on legal aspects of this. I mean, it's obvious you've done some, some homework. But I will say that, um, to, 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 you know, the timing of this, I think, is also suspect, and I think it raises concerns with a lot of folks, in that it comes among, or amidst this defund the police movement that we've seen nationally. I, I, so, so there, there's certainly a timing aspect of this, too. You may be absolutely right from a legal standpoint, but it, from my perspective, the optics are bad. It, it may legitimately not do anything, as you say, but the optics are bad to say, hey, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna, that police officer who's out there risking his life, we're gonna, 'cause I'm a layman. We're gonna take away his qualified immunity, so some, some, you know, thug can sue him because, you know, he, he didn't do something right, you know.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's one of those things that I, I understand that perspective, but I think the reality is, if you've ever spent time in a courtroom, especially here in southwest Virginia, if you've got twelve jurors on there, I don't think that those jurors, and I'd be hard-pressed to find many lawyers, who are gonna go and challenge a, uh, an individual for a split-second decision without it being particularly egregious. And he'd still have to, that individual would still have to prove that lawsuit.
It's not necessarily a split decision. It's a decision that I have to make, and I'll speak for me as a law enforcement officer. It's in the back of my mind. Am I gonna get sued for every little bit of thing I do? And it opens up the door for that. It opens up the door for everybody that says, I was done wrong, to sue me.
They already have that.
Defend myself.
They already have that right.
They have that right to a certain extent. But what I'm putting in my mind is what you're putting the other police officer in mind is a hesitation to defend you because he's afraid he's gonna get sued. Don't do that. I'm sorry. I have a split second at two o'clock in the morning. I don't have all night to sleep on a tough call. You do, and the sheriff and chief do. I don't. That's all I'm saying. It's a split-second decision.
You, you talking about, I haven't known that girl, that girl in the restaurant. And, uh, she was looking for, she was in jail, and this girl never told me.
That's right. She spent a week in jail. It's not, she never did. Was the wrong person, wrong name, never was identified.
We're, we're not staying as not a state, man. We're not staying there.
I was terrified. I was put in jail for a week because somebody didn't do, if I put, if I, my, if I did the same thing at my job, if I sued somebody who was the wrong person, and when I got the right information, didn't do anything, I would be personally liable. The judge would say, Mr. Reese, you need to pay this lady for her time, for her.
Seems like it's on baby, that's the bad part. That's how, that's the experience that I, that's the, that's the perception I have.
I, 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 I think the, the whole doctrine, though, would be anathema to the people who wrote our constitution. They would find it to be terrifying that agents of the state empowered to hurt, kill, and imprison us weren't liable when they made mistakes, because people should be liable when they make mistakes. You are, I am, Mr. Radcliffe is, when he's outside of the uniform. And I just think we should all be treated the exact same way.
Who are we gonna get to do this work? Who's gonna do it? They've already had a social service worker stabbed today. These idiots are won't, it's, it's getting out of hand. These idiots are wanting social service workers and go up and act through these domestic laws. Just had it in, had her a few times, and had her stabbed today. Had her stabbed today, because they're not giving the police officer, not giving people the feel. I'd be damned if I'm putting what I got on my life to anybody sitting in this room that I still turn around and sue me for protecting you. Ain't gonna happen. I don't have all my, I don't have all my to sit in a courtroom. Y'all can sit back there. I'm here in this court. I've been in the courtroom a lot longer than you back. You're a lot smarter than I am, probably, and a lot. But I have been in these courts many years for murders, rapes, you name it. And if it wasn't for that police officer putting everything he had on the line to defend the very person that's gonna sue him, who's gonna do it? Who's gonna do it? The chief now is struggling to her officer, the sheriff. We got seven uncertified people, never in my history, thirty years. Have I seen that? Who's gonna do it? Sure as hell ain't gonna be me the more. I ain't losing what I got, but some piece of trash head laying on the street thinks I done him wrong. Yes, there's mistakes, man. Sure is.
He had a pillow with talking, uh, in the middle of it. Same thing. She was in the, in the bed. Eighteen hours.
It's not saying that, that all law enforcement officers should be liable for every little thing they do. It's just saying, when they make a big mistake, there should be consequences, just like there is for the rest of them.
I believe there are consequences.
Sometimes, but sometimes not.
And, and, and there's, and, you know, there's always room to improve this, the system. But I think you just have to be careful about making those improvements, because you are, to Mr. Radcliffe's point, you're gonna undermine the whole profession.
Well, but I think the thing is, is that the problem with, the problem with qualified immunity right now is that it's not clear. It's difficult for even lawyers and judges with twenty-four hours to look at it to say, is this such qualified immunity, or is it not? Is it similar enough to the facts? And I don't think police officers are out there thinking, well, I heard in North Carolina, a lady did X, Y, and Z, and so I'm not gonna do that. I think that people, if they know that the rule is clear and consistently applied, they will do a good job.
It's funny, I had a conversation with a gentleman the other day. He's a cruddy, uh, expert and teaches. And he was talking about fight or flight, and he said that they've done studies that when you're put in a life-or-death situation, or a fight-or-flight situation, that you basically lose your hearing and you get tunnel vision.
Tunnel vision.
To your threat, whatever your threat is. So if somebody is pointing a gun at you, or some, you believe they're pointing a gun at you, that's what you believe, and that's what you react to. Accidents are gonna happen in that scenario. It absolutely are. But at the same time, if we start second-guessing our officers in the field, our officers are gonna get killed. If they, if they hesitate, they're gonna die. If they, if they hesitate, they're gonna die. Why, why, who would want that job? You know, you, you're not gonna get rich doing that, you're not gonna make a lot of money. People do it because they wanna protect and serve the community, and, and, but it, but if, if, if the community's not gonna support them, and, and the minute they make a mistake, they're gonna end up charged with murder and in jail, that, what, what dumbass would wanna do that job? Excuse my language. Who would want that job? Nobody. And guess what? Who's gonna suffer when nobody wants that job? The citizens of the very, the very communities that we talk about protecting, our own community. I just don't see it.
I have a motion on this floor.
Just to make sure I understand the nature of the motion. I apologize, I don't have the resolution in front of me, to make sure I understand correctly. The, the motion is. To oppose any legislative effort to repeal or revise the judicial adoption of qualified immunity for law enforcement officers. The motion is to oppose repealing. Yes.
Which basically opens us up for any of these lawsuits we wanna be sued for.
Uh, I don't think that that's an accurate statement of the law or the facts. But that's, that's a different opinion from Mr. Radcliffe, and I, I just wanna point out though, just for the record.
It's welcome.
For, um, for the record, the, the, the resolution, um, says, uh, talking about deputy positions. That's in the one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph, six whereas paragraph. I believe we don't have deputies in the town, and it probably should be changed to officers. And then, um, it sounds about the city's delegation, that's in the resolve section, and that should be towns, just to make it accurate.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please, sir?
Mr. Pan.
Bruce.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn.